All the meeting to order, thanks. Alright. Any changes to the agenda? Okay, I hear none, all deemed approved. Um, third item is comments from the chair. Uh, maybe I, I could just turn this over to Kirby since he ran the last meeting. Um, I, thank you for doing that and thanks everyone for helping out me.
He couldn't figure out how to vote to adjourn.
I know, I still didn't, it's my one chance to learn how to, how to do some process.
It's just not a debate of abortion. Um, anything that you wanna discuss from last meeting?
Uh, well, it looks like we are going to discuss the substantive part from last meeting tonight, which is kind of, we were planning for tonight a little bit, um, to talk about how we'd like to communicate with other committees and try to, try to be leaders, I guess you could say, in organizing some of the work from the other committees in the city. Uh, so we'll be talking about that tonight, um, so, uh, we had some first comments about that last week. I gave a sort of stream of consciousness summary of the, uh, regional energy plan, which is going to vote tomorrow. I believe by now I've sent a link to everyone on the commission with that. And for the public who's interested in the regional energy plan, you can go to the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission website and find that plan and review yourself as a member of the public. Uh, that's really it, nothing new for me.
Okay, okay, thanks. And the only thing I'll say is we're gonna keep plugging ahead with our new work on the new city plan, although we keep calling it master plan during the agenda. I didn't catch it either, Mike. Until just now and I realized.
Okay, so can I, I don't know if this is the right moment, but I, I, okay. I feel confused, so the city just updated or approved the master plan and the city plan is something different?
We have been using the term master plan for years in the city. And the term master plan is typically used, I mean, as you know, in the Act 250 context as you're mapping out a development proposal. And so, given that it's often used in that context, we wanna avoid confusion, refer to it as a municipal plan or a city plan, and we settled on a city plan. But this requires a big paradigm shift for everyone, not only on the commission, but in the community. So, that's why I keep trying to say city plan because we're gonna try to refer to it by its name, which is a little bit more, uh, is clearer what it's identifying. Do you have thoughts on that?
Well, what, so what is, I guess I don't, I should, yeah.
The question is, what are we doing here?
Yeah, what is, yeah.
That's another.
The city plan is the, the master plan for all intents and purposes.
Oh.
I think your question is, we extended the old master plan.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, okay.
And till when, December?
No, it's good for eight years.
Oh, well, we really got our money's worth. But we can, we're tacked on some things at the end of the, what, five or six years of the new existence. So, the idea is we start undoing new plan.
Okay, and do we know how long that process will take or?
Less than eight years, right?
Less than eight years, or how long?
It'll take a number of years to probably get through that.
Okay.
I promised we'd have the zoning done by the time I got out of Afghanistan. And we failed. So, we don't make any promises, it's too easy to hit them.
No, that's good, I just wanted to get an idea.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't understand.
No, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, sometimes if you were looking some other places, you'll see a discussion of a master plan, but usually, that would usually relate to it like a downtown master plan or some type of, almost like a site plan.
It's a physical.
It's a physical plan as opposed to the, the city plan or the municipal plan, which has the required ten, twelve elements and all the pieces. Just talking about everything from education to community services to housing. More of a comprehensive plan.
Okay, I see, so we're trying to use that terminology.
Yeah, landscape architects and architects would be referring to a master plan in a completely different sense. Most communities don't call their city plans or town plans, master plans. We just have, because on my shelf I have master plans for the city of Montpelier that date back to 1965, 68? For whatever reason, whoever did it in the 60s called it a master plan and everyone re-adopted it since then, kept that.
Well, we've been trying to use the term city plan for at least a year.
It's hard.
Yep. But the public really knows it as the master plan, so.
Yep. But reality, it's not.
I think there were elements of a master plan, which were sort of interesting, like turning around this area into a mall and stuff like that.
Yeah, there were more physical proposals that were in those plans. Connecting streets cross. You know, making more of a grid and street network through downtown. So, yes, we're just trying to practice getting ourselves out of the habit of calling us the master plan update as the city plan update. That's what, we will try.
Yeah.
And fail.
Yep.
Get back up.
Yep.
That's right. Okay, so that's it, the comments from the chair. General business comments from the public about something on the agenda, we don't have any members of the public present. So, we'll move on to number five, which is called, item five is called master plan update discussion. We're gonna amend that to city plan update discussion. And, um, Mike, do you wanna take it away?
Um, yeah, I'll just, I'll kick this off, so, um, we had talked about housing being the first chapter. The Housing Task Force meets this Thursday. So, I'll be going to their meeting this Thursday night and talking to them about this and inviting some or more of them to the 26th for your commission meeting. So, we can kind of have a joint meeting, talk about, I guess, with the rest of these, which is a little bit of what our expectations are. Are we gonna provide a framework? Some of these we may not be able to answer completely tonight, but these are some things that we wanted to start to, to talk about.
Okay, so do you wanna walk through them one by one?
Yeah, I mean, uh, so the expected framework, so I just printed out, I grabbed three different housing chapters and I didn't make a bunch of copies of each, so we can pass some of them around if we need to. One was, you know, this one's Berry Cities, this one's South Burlington's and this one's Middlebury. So, I just tried to grab ones from different parts of the state, 'cause they're presumably written by different people, maybe.
Is there one that you prefer?
I don't, I, I kinda, I mean, a lot of this comes down to layout. There are certain requirements that we have to talk about in the housing element, um, but there's not a lot. Talk about, I think, a plan for affordable housing for low to moderate income persons, I think, sounds about right. But really, you can talk about anything related to housing, you just have to talk about that one piece, so, um, I, it really comes down to, a lot of the, the plan is really to kind of tell a story or make a case or set the stage for what our plan is gonna be going forward. And so, I don't know, I thought, there was a little bit that, I thought that Middlebury did a nice job of laying out a little introduction piece, then they talked about trends, you know, affordability, sustainability, character, social interaction. It looks like they, they set out their plan to be laid out with some principles in mind. And then they kind of tied them back in and then got into their goals and policies and recommendations. I didn't read carefully all the goals and policies to see if it really made sense, but I mean, a lot of this is what we'll eventually want to get to provide to our committees is, is this kind of how we plan to go. A little bit of it, though, is, I mean, that's why we're doing one chapter.
Yeah.
We do one chapter, see where it goes, see how we, you know. But the idea is, or at least the idea that we were recommending and discussing last time, was that this, what is gonna be in the plan is gonna be relatively short, potentially links to a lot of other documents that would really kind of, um, not bury the public in data and a bunch of information, but really to kind of digest all that information down and maybe put the rest of that into an appendix.
So, the implementation steps would be in an appendix potentially?
We could separate those out as well, into an appendix as well, the, the specific implementation and really just talk about, you know, four or five pages of, of housing.
What's your thought about using what you've already done, that you worked on last year? What, that was what the Housing Task Force was?
Yeah, that's, that one is really not the final product, it's a good, that's the piece that would be kind of linked. Because I don't think that's necessarily telling the public, that's really kind of explaining to somebody who might be a little bit of a policy wonk who wants to know, why did we choose this policy really specifically? 'Cause it really kind of goes into, this is why we have this written this way, because this word is important, this word's important, this word's important.
Oh, I guess I was thinking more in terms of the housing piece that you actually did that had the implementation steps involved.
Oh, the implementation steps would definitely be in it, we would probably digest that into a table or a table or something. I don't, I'm not sure how that would get formulated, but the written text part, I think what's in that table, we can always work on how to make that presented, but I think what we need out of the committees is to kind of work on the text part that would be up.
Yeah, I was just thinking.
How to write it, the, the goals and policies will, will agree, that's a goal we like, and at some point we just have to decide how to present it.
So, I think something that could be useful right now is if we walk through what parts of the analysis we think are important to be included in the housing chapter and with a view to how those would be important in other chapters. And Stephanie sent me and Kirby some helpful comments. She was saying, things that we, we might want the Housing Task Force to consider could be a current conditions analysis, for example. We want them to take a look at what the housing availability is right now out there, just to kind of see what's out, what's available on the ground today. Then the goal setting, which is what you were just talking about, um, well, you're talking about the implementation of those goals, but first you have to identify the goals. So, what do you wanna see accomplished in the next 10 years is the framework that, I mean, the timeline that Stephanie offered? We could assess that, if folks think it should be eight years or however long. The third piece that she recommended is capability assessment, meaning what resources or tools does Montpelier have that could be used to reach the goals? And finally, uh, this is the implementation piece, what actions should the city take with existing resources or in order to gain additional resources in order to meet these goals? I thought that was a great framework for what, what the meet should be in a given chapter. Well, let's talk about it, 'cause especially since Mike's going to our next meeting. It sounds like they probably have a lot of this information, it's just might be floating or maybe they just need help, or need to a framework. Maybe they don't, maybe they have it all planned out already, but if we have a thought on it, we should offer it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm pretty sure they have a, they have an idea, I think, of what they want. I think the issue is just kind of getting it all put down, getting it all written out and presented in such a way that, um, it can be discussed and debated publicly because they, as much as they have a lot of support, you know, they also get pushback on certain things that they want. So, at the same time, if they make a case for something, you know, they'll have the, the support behind it and then if, if the planning commissioner, city council decides to make some changes, we can obviously address those. But I think they just have to start to put those things down and put them into context and decide. You know, we've talked about an inspection program, rental inspection program, you know, the, I know Housing Task Force has, are they interested in saying that it's gonna be a goal that they wanna follow up on? Or is that one that they kind of, they kind of like the idea, but they don't wanna push it?
That was my question for you, is, is it the goals that you're seeing as the piece where more, I mean, I mean, the, assessing current conditions should be straightforward, I don't think anyone's gonna really debate on that. There might be some members of the public who could help correct or provide history where he did. But that should be pretty straightforward. The capability assessment, what tools we have, that should be fairly straightforward, right? So, then, the, the two things where it could be trickier is goal setting and implementation of those goals. But we can at least get some of the pieces put together.
So, current conditions should at least partially be set in the existing city plan, right? You reworked the original of those statistics anyway?
Yeah, I mean, we have a lot of statistics, so usually the bigger question come in. Yeah, the bigger question for some of these is, how much of this do we really wanna talk about? Like, we were coming up with just five or six pages that we wanna talk about for housing. How much do we really wanna talk about, um, current conditions? Because we could have current conditions, I could put five pages of census data on housing.
Yeah, I think a summary on that with the appendices that you discussed would make sense.
Yeah, I think we just have to pick out what are gonna be the important ones based on our goals. So, I usually work a little bit backwards from the goals back to conditions, 'cause you really, again, come back to this telling the story. We're gonna tell the pieces of information that are important in explaining the story, the position, and the plan that we have.
I think that works as long as, we don't have to write up the current conditions before we set, figure out the goals, but I think there needs to be a firm, firm understanding of what.
Compile them somewhere in an appendix.
You have to understand them, yeah, because otherwise the goals don't have any context.
Yeah.
Is most of the data from the 2000 census?
The 2010.
2010.
Yeah.
So, what do you folks think about, 'cause I feel like it'd be helpful if we give them more, you know, narrower, more specific sort of a box to work within. And if we, um, if we can set something up so that anything that's being written is sort of classified, tagged under sort of an accepted framework, like maybe, you know, there's a goal and if we can have one goal, and it's, this is an example of a components of the goal and then there may be some measurable objectives, like how do we know if we've met that goal? And then you have, you know, strategies, policies or actions that link to those. And then behind those, you should have the information or data supporting it. And if we have them, essentially, write this in a way that if all of these are classified in a way, in a certain way with the same tags and the same schema, then what we can do is afterwards is create a, a plan that's sort of digital or interactive very easily. So that you can then sort by, you know, either committee program or project that this is assigned to or topic area, if that's what you're interested in afterward, you know, what's on this year's objectives or targets. So, you have the data, the information in one place, but then you can provide different views on it.
Seems to me if we follow the rule, um, we're gonna use existing water and sewer. Number of places for new housing is pretty small. And zoning, five years of work is trying to identify those places and change zone so that more housing can be built. Just coming through Mary, their concern deteriorating housing just by newspaper stories and rest. Needing, needing better enforcement of housing codes, public safety standards. I think we do need to maintain the quality of what we have here if the opportunity of building many new houses is small. At least it's my anecdotal view, but that's all I have to say.
So, one of the goals is to keep it in the.
Yeah, and that's a money issue, of course, that, that's an enforcement issue. And I bet there's very little data on, I'd be surprised if there's much data on maintenance and rental quality. I mean, it's really a market factor, if you have it sits or rents are comparatively high, I imagine the places are well preserved.
Not all of them.
Well, but that's what I would want, are people getting feared out of flip?
So, I'm interested in pursuing this discussion, but I'm, I wanna make sure that we have our sort of process framework suggestions for them first before we get into the substantive conditions, which is where we're treading right now.
Sorry, but I.
No, and it's a great point.
I was thinking of data collection.
But it sounds like they've already done a lot of that, would you say, Mike?
If it's from 2010, it's fairly common.
Yeah, depends on the, I mean, there's some data that we have that's, that's fairly even more up to date than that. We can get some realtor data, um, because some things really kind of fluctuate with time pretty quickly. Uh, number of days on the market or actually months, supply is the one that the realtors use more. You know, how much supply is on the market, because that drives whether, if you're less than six months, then prices have to rise. If it's more than six months, then prices have to drop, so it's a.
Well, it sounds like we'll have to re, if this is going to be our initial chapter to send out to the other committees as an example and it is most likely to change, we'll have to revisit it at the end of the process again.
They, they're all gonna change, we'll probably have to revisit them in the end. I mean, economic development is another one, unless we started with natural resources, would be probably the most static factor. But I think a lot of them would change. But, um, a lot of the policies that go in, and I think, you know, I like where John was going with, with his thought of, you know, trying to set up a framework, 'cause I think, I do think a digital plan is the thing of the future. I mean, it really isn't gonna be the paper plans, even though that's still kind of the requirement we have under state laws to produce this paper plan. And I think a plan that's, um, interactive on the web is gonna really be something, if we can start making some steps in that direction, I think that's, that's kind of, you know, as you said, searchable where you can, you know, you've got everything there, you can, you know, search by box and you could then bring up what's all in the energy plan, what's all in 2015 or 2018, what's in.
How does that touch on other areas too?
Yeah, how does that affect other?
That, that interactivity would be really useful for us.
So, how do we, how do we do that?
I think that's starting at the end and working to the forward. And it's, instead of starting, you know, most of these plans, when we write these plans to a planner, we start at the front, right, the front work our way, the last thing we work on is the implementation plan. And I think, a little bit, where John, so I'd like to just go a little bit of, same place I was going last year, which is really kind of, let's start with the goals, policies and recommendations. Find out where we wanna go and then write the narrative part that supports plan, the implementation plan that kind of lays the groundwork for the implementation and kind of working backwards.
But if you have a pretty good idea of what the goals are, then that's really a good place to do it.
And I think the Housing Committee already has the goals. I think that document I provided last time with the goal, policies and recommendations, I think the goals are there. That was our first chew through the process. I think we have more refinement we need to do with that and more discussions and go to the public and get more input and work on some of those details a little bit more, because we really didn't work a lot on the details. But I think some of the big goals and the vision pieces are where they're probably gonna be headed. The only question I had for them that I found was that we really didn't have a good goal on affordability, which is one of the ones that's probably the most important element, but, um.
Kirby, what are the outlying towns saying about population, is it growing, stagnant? I mean, if we build a lot of houses, just theoretically, where are the people gonna come from?
Um, I don't, I don't know a lot as far as data on that. I do know that there's, I mean, there's some growth in the towns around us and I know anecdotally that, 'cause I know a lot of people who live in towns around us who want to live in Montpelier and they tried and failed at either renting or buying here. So, I know, I know enough people where that's just like a common, that's just a very common area here, I know, in this region. So, people are going to communities nearby because there is housing available there. And it's just, that's just, Montpelier is really in an extreme position in that we have close to zero percent, that's the measure for vacancy rates for rental, you know, that kind of thing. And it's a complete seller's market.
We've also seen an increase in commuters to the, essentially Burlington area, the pricing, where has we just got.
Could you speak up a little?
Uh, we've seen an increase in commuters to the Burlington area as housing prices over there have increased fairly dramatically from 2000 to 2010. So, the, um, population growth has sort of pushed out to that 35-minute drive area and even a little bit beyond, when you look at even places around St. Alden, sort of Fairfield or Fairfax, they are seeing population growth as a result of housing prices in Burlington. We're seeing a little bit of that in Montpelier as well.
So, what do we do with that?
We increase, we need to have to increase the supply of housing.
Yeah, that's right, and especially housing that's walkable to downtown, so that people are just not just bringing more.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the, the statistics pieces are just to understand the, the situation. A good example I can give is, um, when I was working in the Wild County. Um, everybody that lived in Morrisville worked in Waterbury. Everybody who worked in Morrisville, which was a job center, Morrisville was both a bedroom community and a job center. And it's gotta be, takes talent to do that. So, they actually had, you know, like eighty percent of the people who lived in Morrisville left to go somewhere else to go to work. And there was more jobs and there were people in Morrisville, so everyone from Johnson and Wolkett, everywhere came into Morrisville. So, it's kind of this weird, eight o'clock, everybody flushes out and everybody flows in. At 4:30, everybody goes out and everybody comes back and it was this weird dynamic because the people who lived there couldn't, people lived there because they couldn't afford to live in Waterbury. But that drove up the housing prices, prices in Morrisville such that people who worked in Morrisville couldn't actually afford to live there. And so, they lived in Wolkett, Needen and the surrounding communities. So, you end up with this weird, but it's helpful from the planning commission and the planning standpoint to understand that about your community. And I think that's a little bit, understanding our housing situation helps us realize that it's not just our housing situation, we're being affected by Chitting County. So, certain things we're not gonna be able to fix, we can't change, we can't make them build more housing to help lower the pressure here. But at the same time, we're increasing our housing stock. We have added a lot of housing over the past 50 years, but at the exact same time, we've also, you know, our housing, household size went from three to two. So, just to keep the same population, we had to have a 50% increase in housing. So, you know, we're basically 2.0 right now. So, as we add housing units, we just get smaller households. But that also gives us a housing stock of large houses predominantly filled by much smaller families. So, that's why the Housing Task Force has tried to come up with new policies and programs and say, how can we take these larger houses and be able to do these infill? That's why, you know, doing these duplexes, can we take this, you know, we're not really adding a second house, you know, trying to explain to the people when we're doing the master plan and doing the zoning, we're not actually looking to add another house when we say we're gonna add another quality. We're simply gonna take that existing house and subdivide it internally into two units because it was a house that was built for a family of six that now has a family of two.
Yeah, it won't have any more people living there than it did previously.
Yes, it's got the same number of people, it's just gonna be two units in that increase in the density, but. Um, and I think we've allowed it, the new zoning will do a lot to enable more housing. And now it's up to the Housing Task Force to kind of. Um, and I think we've allowed it, the new zoning will do a lot to enable more housing, and now it's up to the Housing Task Force to kind of help with ways of. How do we facilitate, how do we help property owners who have a big house to subdivide? To make that happen. How do they learn how to be landlords? Because, you know, somebody doesn't need to, they might just say it's not worth the hassle. I think that's, that's the trick for the Housing Committee is to come up with a strategy to.
And that comes back to your comment before, which is we have limited areas where we have to develop it. So how do we?
Well, that sounds like a lot of technical knowledge that would be required, both. Contractors, how do you do it, and legal? How do you get the buggers out if they don't pay? Other things, that sort of have to be available for people.
So does Housing Task Force have a list of goals of that nature now?
Um, yeah, I think I I handed out last time. That was, this is, this, we had from last time. So I remember we had this, this should increase housing development until, well, that was the goal.
That's why I wondered this one.
The aspiration was Montpelier will have healthy housing market that provides an adequate supply of housing to, in a mix of housing type sizes and occupancies. The goal, how we, how are we gonna get housing development to have a five percent vacancies in the rental market? And so looking at developing an infrastructure incentive program. That's to help people be able to extend the utilities to these units, because a lot of times it's just, we're trying to get the costs down for the developer. So if the cost to developer, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to develop the unit, if they can't make enough rent to pay the mortgage, if we can get that down to two fifty. Then we might be able to get them into their, into their range where the economic market works for them. So that was just a list of tools. Now the question for the Housing Committee is, how many of those do we want to pursue? What's our priority? We just started putting ones out there.
Okay, I didn't know if you worked with that.
Are there others that we missed that we?
Yeah.
Yeah, are there, there are other programs that we've missed that we should be considering and putting on that list?
And there's some elements that then could be taken off now potentially.
Yeah, some of those we've already done with the, with the zoning. The sprinkler stuff, there was this, the comment in there that said we should have, uh, remove the sprinkler requirements.
So you are using that format at least as a talking point.
That would be the start. I would, my assumption was, I think that's where.
Yeah, okay.
If we started to work on something like that, then we've got something that's kind of can be replicated or can be built on. Something we can put into a. Excel type database. Excel, but I'm not a computer person, but some kind of database that would then let you be able to manipulate within a matrix of different fields. I wanna know. All of the ones that are already being done, because some of these that are described in there. Are talking about continuing to do something. Well, that's not something new. If the goal, if the program in there says we should just keep doing what we're doing with this program, well, that's not something new, we just have to recognize that we're doing it. What are all the new things that we plan to do this year? We can search that.
Would it be helpful then to kind of try to put John's suggestion into the practice then? To, to, to think of this in terms of, of. Starting with the goals maybe and and breaking out based on future action, maintaining those categories we talked about before. And having committees kind of divide things up that way for us?
I think, um.
Or something else.
Yeah, well, no, I think figuring out like, for we have goals, objectives, strategies or actions. What are the different attributes that we wanna know about those actions? So, you know, are they part of a? What project or program is, is going to sort of implement those? When will it happen? How will we know when we get there? So is it measurable? Is it something that we're maintaining, evolving or transforming without Montpelier? You know, that itself could be one, so that you could then see what are we across the town, what are proposing to keep doing, what are we changing? How much will it, this cost? Is there any data supporting it? Or do we have any estimates? So then you could then sort by. What are, in terms of dollar amounts? The priorities.
Would you have, um, implementation over time? I mean, have, have goals that are. Part of the way through the process, in other words, intermediate goals. In order to sort of set targets, or are you just saying that in the course of this eight years, we're going to get from point A to point B?
I think it depends on the goal.
Yeah, but I think.
Okay, but some of them would have more immediate.
Right, and some of them will, may also be suit of, limited by data availability. So, you know, we're gonna have the twenty twenty census coming out of this. And in two thousand and twenty-one, we're gonna have a whole bunch of data coming out of this. So it wouldn't make sense to say, you know, get the use twenty nineteen or twenty twenty-one estimates for. So. I, I would say there should be some flexibility on. Benchmarks, but. Just having so that when people write things out, they're thinking, well, what is this? Is this a policy? Is it a strategy? And then once it's in a box, then you can ask some of those other questions. And once we have them all, it becomes a lot much easier to bring things together and. Present a plan that people can.
So the first question is, is this a policy, project? We had a few different things. It was the.
Your program or what was the other one?
So it's the first.
Permits, programs. Projects, plans.
And I just threw it at random.
Yeah, that's what we.
Yeah, you could, you could choose any of those.
That's what we talked about before.
So, so that would be like an, an action type or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As, as like one, that kind of data field for.
Did, did I go over the, the, we put together a hypothetical discussion one that I went over for.
Oh, it was maybe a year and a half ago.
Cities, yeah. Yeah, for. To have a goal of city full of. Butterflies, unicorns and rainbows. And so we went through and kind of laid out.
Right.
You know, because it would lay out in a, in a structure, how you would go through and say, well, maintain, enhance, transform, what are we trying to do with butterflies? Try to maintain the butterfly population, we're trying to enhance the number of rainbows. Gotta be transformative and introduce unicorns. It was meant to be just a way of having the conversation. But it does lay out the pieces of how you talk about each one of the steps. How do you talk about a goal? How do you talk about? Policies and those pieces, and then how do you?
So, yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to bring together our different ideas about what we're trying to bring out, and that's. It's, that's a framework we talked about that exists, that we can use as a template of some kind, to bring technology into it more. It just sounds like it's, it's not any, a change in what the information we're providing, but it's a change in how we end up displaying the information down the road. Is that an accurate description of, like, the way to, to use technology more? Or like, or should we be gathering like a different data center of the group of information right now to plan for that?
I think it could be a little bit of both. I mean, if something. It's helpful to know what you're working towards, if we wanna have a consistent. Format, and to make our lives easier, and if we're gonna do it, let's do it once. So writing it and then trying to fit that to something else. So, I mean, I think, um, Montpelier has a G Suite for government. You have Google Drive set up?
I've used it in committee, I don't know if it's set up broadly.
I'm just wondering, maybe there's a folder, a plan folder for all the committees to be working off of documents in one place, and they could even do this. You could set the settings so they're visible to anyone in the public, so that it's a transparent process, but everyone's sort of working off of one. Copy. The template that's sitting everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, I think what I'm hearing is in order for what we do now to translate into things that's easy to use in the technical, these technology. Tools we have available, we need to make sure that we're doing it in a way that it's consistent from day one. So when we're setting goals, we have to identify what are the various dropdown menus, so to speak? So one could be, this, is this goal to maintain? Enhance or transform, or you use evolve. So whatever terms we're gonna use, let's use the same ones every time, and whatever you're most familiar with and prefer, I think we just use those. Then the second question is, is this a policy or a program or? Would it be a regulatory mechanism? I mean, that, that set of questions would be another one. So figuring out what are these various. Differentiating pieces, figure out the terms we're gonna use and you're using them across the board. Will enable the tags that we place on them to be cross-functional, so we wanna see every, uh. Regular, every goal that implicates a regulatory change, you could click something and see the goals together. That's what you're envisioning.
Right, and, and I think these, whatever we're asking, there needs to be a purpose for it, right? We shouldn't just ask for something because it sounds nice, so it should have like a function, which then leads to writing something that's useful, right? If you're writing, if you know you have to write something in order to get classified for whatever reason or answer that question. And there's a reason for that, and you can write something that's pretty useful.
Yeah, it starts to force you, doesn't let you be lazy, which forces you into a direction, which is a little bit why we did that whole structure that we did. Start to force that. Is this continuing? Is this something new? Once we've gotten to this, you know, once you say you're gonna do a regulation, now you have to answer one of these questions. It's gotta be. You're either encouraging something or you're requiring something. But you can't, you know, so it starts to force you into this thing. Why, what are we gonna do with this regulation? Use this regulation to require solar panels on houses? Or are we gonna do something that provides a density bonus so we can encourage solar panels on houses? You know, we've gotta have that kind of discussion, and by having it within the box, it starts to force you into not to say. You know, the zoning should discuss or have regulations about solar panels. It's not really helpful when we get to writing zoning, we wanna provide direction, right? If it's all on the table, then we can then, if we were working on zoning, we could query everything that says zoning policy and kind of dump it in.
So how's something like that work, John? Is it, if you had it in a, say, a Google document? As a matrix or something then, and you went to, uh, search for some particular item? Would you be, since the Google is searchable, would it be able to pop up all of the things that, say, had regulations attached to them?
Yeah, I mean, ideally afterwards, we basically just create an interface that's a lot more user friendly, so you aren't. We don't wanna send people to this spreadsheet or to, um, you know, people not to read something, that's probably the only way to do it, but. You should be able just to. Search by word or, you know, dropdown or different views or tabs or lots of different ways to do this. And we can also just link it to different maps as well.
Well, would the committees have to do it first in an Excel document or something like that, or?
That would probably be the easiest.
Or am I dating myself late? We're trying to access databases now.
No, Excel databases are still around, but I think a lot of people are, uh, either comfortable with, uh, Google Sheets or Excel. And then from that, as long as they don't get destroyed. They tend to, and it sometimes. Get scrambled. Migrate it to. A more secure database.
And that, but it could be interactive in terms of, that way the committee could be working on one document the whole time within Google Docs or something. But that doesn't mean that other committees are gonna be able to input to that particular document or restrict.
Unless you.
Uh, no, no, probably not.
I think probably, probably gonna just have just a chair or something with docs at the end of the day. So maybe don't have too many cooks in the kitchen then. But that's good.
You could see, but yeah, I think some committees would probably wanna have a little more inner.
Yeah, sometimes there's, some committees have just one person, only take one, one person who can come through.
It, it may not work for everyone either, like you can't always just force it.
But it's good to have an open process. I mean, the more open the process we can make it, I think is, is the hope that more people who have an interest in commenting. You can get their input, get their thoughts.
Well, I like the idea of having the working documents available. Uh, online, it would be viewable to the public. Not everyone should be able to edit them. We don't have a Wikipedia situation, but. Just the least, you know, the committee working on it would have editing availability and then everyone else would have viewing capability.
Potential for comments too, then if the public was gonna do it, could the public offer comments that would go to? I mean, that's.
Public team, public on anything at any time.
Yeah, yeah, I know. But having them write them down is really helpful, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, and that brings us to the next B here. What process should we expect the committees to use? And I have some notes from Stephanie here where. Her thoughts are that each committee should be responsible for at least some form of outreach on their chapter, like a kickoff or a visioning meeting. And then. At the, at the Planning Commission level, we would review the visioning from the last plan. I guess she's talking about the last master plan. And have some public discussion to make sure it's still accurate. So I think she's, she's talking about a separate outreach process there. But as far as the committee's outreach and public input, I mean, I think. They should come to an initial recommendation of goals and then have some sort of outreach to the public to see if those goals align with what the committee is interested in achieving.
I think it's important to, to address that expectation now as well, to, so to include that in our communities' knowledge and work, so that they can. Think that way.
Yeah.
And our, so we would actually say that each committee would have their own outreach meeting potentially.
Yeah, I think that they could choose the way they wanna do it, but. It seems like it would be important to get feedback on the goals at that level so that they would have control over adjusting the goals based on their feedback before it came to us. Rather than it, you know, the public coming out against whatever the Housing Task Force said, without them having a chance to kind of think about it.
You can never predict what the public will do. I mean, they may not care at the first step and the exact same thing gets proposed a year later by the Planning Commission.
Oh, yeah.
But, but at least if there's, at least if we've gone out and, and the committees have gone to kind of make, you know, made a presentation, rolled out some. These are our plans, these are our goals, this is how we plan to accomplish it, this is what we're gonna present to the Planning Commission, and if the public has comments. They, they, they provide the opportunity to adjust it at that point, it's gonna come from the Planning Commission itself, and get pulled together and presented again.
So that might be something that would be coordinated through your office then?
Yeah, I would probably, with whoever the staff is, we would have to be working with them. When we're working on the plan, we'd have to be working with them with an idea, you know, that the, the Energy Committee would have to be having a conversation, right? We're gonna work on the energy plan. We're focusing on goal policies, recommendations, we're gonna start there and work our way back to the written text part. When we've got some draft goals, either go out with no goals and try to go to the public. I usually think that's a bad idea. Usually I like to get some. Ideas for people to chew on. Give it to the public. If they don't like it, then, then we can go back. If they think we're going in the right direction, refine this. You know, if this is too far, this is not far enough, then we can refine it, finalize it.
One concern I have is often the only members of the public that come out are the ones who are opposed. So we don't always get an accurate representation of what the brighter party wants. I don't know if anyone has ideas about how we can reach more, I don't think, to the public, but that's something I've been calling over a lot. Is there any budget for food or anything like that at this meeting, or?
We, we can, we can do, I mean, if we can find things at work and it was something like, boy, if we could buy. Three or four pizzas, we could, you know, make these things work. I think we would find in our budget the money for, you know, a couple hundred dollars for stuff like that to, to cover those kinds of expenses. If it's bringing people out, then.
Yeah, ourselves, okay.
I think it's just a matter of finding what, what is the piece, and I think at different times and different topics. It's gonna change, I think, the approach. And I think at different times and different topics, it's gonna change, I think, the approach. People are interested in housing, drawn out by different things. You know, like we talk about, community services and we get to those chapters, you know, just going directly to the senior center and these rec facilities and, you know, kind of do direct outreach would kind of work best compared to, you know, more general topic where we might wanna have a.
If going to where people are, who would never come, who would be going? We've gone to the farmer's market, but could we go to Shoppers or other places in town?
We tried a various mix of that with the energy committee and, you know, that sort of varying response, but I think, you know, in terms of, for elements that are concerning to elders, then I think going to the senior center makes a lot of sense. And the, um, when the last master plan, the actual master plan was done, there was a meeting up at Hillon College that, I don't know if you were there.
There wasn't.
There were probably six hundred people there at various times. And it was sort of a general kind of, they, they set out the goals and, um, in, on all of the areas and, you know, kind of voted, you know, the sticky buttons and all of that in terms of what they thought was important.
How did they get attracted to the meeting, was it?
Yeah.
It was, um, I think that there was some buildup in terms of talking about it and so people in the newspaper or whatever, there was a lot of energy beforehand. And from what I remember is we just found out about it and showed up.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, I think it should not just be one event, that it should be.
Yeah, I think they also had like six or seven business that were working on that project.
Did they really?
I mean, there was a lot of, there was a lot of.
Can we have just one, like, just one?
We have none.
Oh, right, right.
Um, so, yeah, we've got, uh, so, I mean, it, that, that process was a big process and it did a lot to get people out. I think we're gonna try to use a lot of the goals, policies and recommendations out of that plan that kind of laid the groundwork. Cause I, I don't think they're necessarily that far off. I think it just wasn't a strategic, necessarily a strategic plan. Um, when you simply ask people, what do you think is the most important thing for us? What's the most important goal is important. Asking people to tell you what is, the way you should implement that goal is different. That really takes more of a nuanced discussion, talking to people who know, who know housing, they go and say, well, we can do that in the next hundred years, it's not gonna affect housing price. These are the things that affect housing price when it's all about stickies. It says, what do you think we should do about housing? You might not be picking the most effective tool, um, because it's, you need to be talking to people who know how to implement those.
But it seems like we need to get a agreement on goals first.
And I think that was, I think that was the little Jones thing is we started with that endpoint, let those committees come up with the recommendation for goals, policies, recommendations, go out to the public, get that. Even if they don't write, necessarily write the, that start now, we can save that till the end when we have all of the implementation pieces done. Because we'd really be down to writing twelve chapters, kind of introductory chapters for each goal, but once we've read them what our goals are, I think it's gonna kind of lay out what we're, what we're telling people. Your introduction to housing, this is what's important about housing. These are our goals, policies and recommendations. And, I don't know, I think, I think, I think it would kind of tell itself, you'll know what you're gonna write based on what our goals are.
So it becomes more of an executive summary at that point, really talking about the overall approach.
Yeah, approach and justification and why it's important, you know. We're gonna talk about why it's important because it's gonna end up being your goal.
If we, if we start with the goals, try to kind of connect that, the outreach that occurs, the game with the outreach ideas, uh, maybe we could think about, as we develop the goals and we have a draft, maybe publish that in some way to get feedback on. So if you're not, ask people to vacuum, I think we saw housing, we actually put them out there. I mean, and that way we're also not, we're not being too reactive. Like we kind of already know what we think the priorities are, so we start working on that, but then incorporate outreach. So that's kind of like, it's still, we'd still be early on the process of goals is the first thing we're doing.
Get feedback at that early stage as to whether or not those are the appropriate goals.
From the public, yeah.
Yeah, if we're gonna build everything off the goals, then we should probably.
Except I feel like goals is the most appropriate thing to get feedback from because maybe not everyone's experts in everything, but they're at least they'll have some opinions on the goal side of it, even the, the weeds. So that, that would be maybe the most appropriate place to get something developed.
Just have a place, cause people naturally will come up with solutions right then and there. Have a place to evolve those.
Yeah, we'll keep, these are the ideas, we'll talk about that, it's a great idea. We'll talk about that as a way of implementing the goal.
And allowing the public to have importance as well.
Yeah, I mean, they still, they, we still have to present at some point what our recommended approach is, but we at least would have an educated and informed decision. Or if this is your goal, we looked at ten different options for implementing that goal. We found these four are appropriate and would be the most effective. And then go to the public and say, these are the four we think we're gonna recommend. We could do any one of these four. Are there ones that you guys like better or would absolutely not want to go for?
Yeah, I think if, if we can split apart the goals and the implementation piece so they have more of a productive conversation.
Yeah, and that, and that's the goal, is to eventually reach that endpoint where we've got a, a strategic plan. That was our goal, was to get a more strategic plan. I think this process will lead us.
How are we gonna measure it?
How do you measure being strategic?
Yes.
Uh, well, I mean, for, for me, wearing my, my planning hat, at least having tasks that we can start to be able to check off, that goes and says, these are ones that have been done. As opposed to having policies of encouraging affordable housing or encouraging accessory apartments. You know, at, at what point did we encourage accessory apartments?
And how many accessories?
And how many of them, yeah. Uh, at least we've got policies that we can look back on. Ultimately, the hope is that we've got goals that are, are somewhat aspirations that are, that are clear, that we can have an understanding of. And I think we, we're gonna try as best we can to attach benchmarks. Some things we can put benchmarks on, I think some just, you know, it's tough to put a benchmark on safe housing. Housing, what's a safe house?
You could, you know.
I mean, it's a difficult thing to.
You could have, you know, the, this number of houses will be received an inspection or something like that, or a single inspection. They're so measurable, they very short, but. Spree woods? Yeah, we could say, got that one answered. No, it's smoke detectors, actually. Yeah, you could have somebody inspecting smoke detectors, that would be great.
So, like, when the housing task force comes in next week, are we gonna give them, I mean, we have those four points that Stephanie came up with that sound good. Do we just give them that or do we wanna give them something more like a template to put this into and then say, I, I guess I'm just not.
Yeah.
Quite sure.
I, I would be interested in trying to get a template going.
Okay.
My school later template.
I mean, some of that, that format kind of fits itself into the template anyway. Can I take a look at them?
Yeah, there's a little bit of that that kind of fits into that, that template format. We think we just have to find a way of categorizing it.
Yeah.
I thought you had a problem.
We do, this was actually written, we had the one that was the hypothetical, which was, you know, the butterflies, rainbows and uniforms. But this was actually written using that format. So if you were to look at that, um, you know, maintain the city's commitment to affirmatively further fair housing and bring attention to the city council in the area where the city does not feel fully, not fully meeting its obligations. So as a goal, it was required to say you're either gonna maintain and enhance or transform. And so that one's gonna maintain, cause we do already have a policy on that. So I think, you know, there's certain ones that it was designed to, to make that, that one doesn't, is, doesn't have as many goals, it doesn't have the programs and policies, but. It was already kind of written in that format, just I think we need to figure out how to assemble that in an online way so we can start to make it more interactive and be able to populate it and then the committees can start populating their.
Yeah.
Their fields.
So for example, so goal A, so the aspiration first is aspiration A. My pillar will have a healthy housing market that provides an adequate supply of housing in a mix of type, sizes and occupancy. And then there's a variety of goals associated with that aspiration. So goal A is increased housing development until five percent vacancies is achieved in the rental market. So that's good, we can measure that. Benchmark, that's what it's saying. Target five percent rental vacancies by twenty twenty five. Benchmark, net increase of one hundred and fifty housing units in five years and if necessary to achieve benchmark twenty, two hundred and forty units by twenty twenty five. And then there's strategies. And here's where I think there's an opportunity to further identify these strategies by what, whether it's a program or regulatory change or, and that's what this, all of the green is. It's, so the strategies are to develop a, a program or amend a tax stabilization program or conduct a study. So I think that it, it's already.
Yeah, it's already laying itself out.
Yeah.
For, the green ones, I think, were new. I think the greens were all the news.
Okay.
And the other ones were to continue.
Yeah.
Cause there was continue, amend and new. So for the, for the program pieces, you were either gonna continue to do it, you were gonna amend it, cause sometimes we would have a program that just needed to be adjusted. And then in some cases, we needed something to.
So maybe we could give it tags like that now at this point?
Yeah.
And just say, continue program or continue whatever, we just.
Yep.
A new program.
Yeah.
A new program.
So there's two categories there, there's a, whether it's a program project or whatever, and then whether it's new, amended or maybe continued.
And it was a little bit wonky and it feels a little funny, but when you start to get into it, you realize it started, it had started to force you into boxes that helped to help you to organize your thinking. And I think it is easy to tag those. And so I, like, how that works, cause I'm not, as I said, I'm not a computer person. How that would actually work, I don't know, but it would be easy to tag those because that was already laid out in that, with the framework and, and a set of rules. And so this is how you write goals, if you wanna have a program.
Whatever keyword you think would make sense, we can make a program recognize. Does that sound reasonable? So whatever tag, I mean, you can choose the tag, the tag could be uniforms and puppies.
The tags.
But I mean, I think that being, you know, picking a consistent tag and, and putting it on the, the drafts now is gonna make it much easier later down the road. That's the sense I was getting from what you were proposing. Please jump in.
Yeah, and mov- moving in that direction and realizing it's okay, it's not perfect now. And we can fix things and, you know, we don't need to worry a whole lot about the technology either necessarily, you know, it continues to be in a Word doc as long as people are answering those questions in a semi-structured way, then we can move into something else after work.
Could we even then, I mean, we could certainly highlight each one of these as a tag, but then have other tags so that the, that we could, um, read between the different reports. For example, energy talks about housing and so energy and housing, could that, you know, then link to something in the housing section? So because we talked before about how much interconnection there's going to be.
Yes. Yeah, and that draft talks about that in a number of places. It talks about having, whether it's neighborhoods and it references, you know, ha- having neighborhoods that are, um, connected, so, you know, uh, the housing plan supports the complete streets network.
Yeah.
Or having neighborhoods that are close to recreation areas, um, you know, has these and those benefits. So the housing plan supports the parks and recreation plan for open space. And their policy of having, uh, a park within.
Certain distance.
Certain distance that they have from every neighborhood. So, um, yeah, I mean, it's already in there and I think that can certainly be built on. You know, the energy plan, having affordable, um, having energy efficient houses are, make housing more affordable because utility costs are a part of the factor that's used for calculating how something is affordable, so.
So we have targets in terms of how many houses would have been weatherized by a certain.
And the housing committee supports your efforts on the energy committee to do that because that is helping us on the housing committee accomplish our goal of having more affordable housing because we can save people, you know, a thousand dollars a year on heating costs. That's a thousand dollars more affordable than this housing plan has become.
So then, part C, uh, says we should have a message of support and explain the commission's role. Committees will provide a proposed plan to their element, but the commission reserves right to amend to balance with the other chapters in the plan. So how do we express that in a way that's supportive? Um, and I'll, I guess I'll just kick off by conveying Stephanie's comments, since she sent them in. She notes that different committees will probably want different levels of involvement from the planning commission while they're working on their chapters. So her suggestion is to give them options of, of how we might be involved with the caveat that since we do have to review and support their work, it may be move them to have us involved in at least some way before they have a final chapter. So some of these options are, one, to invite someone from the commission to participate in the meetings, who could be the liaison. Two, request to be on the agenda of a planning commission meeting, involve the full planning commission as part of the planning process. Or three, so that working sections of the chapters, of your chapters for the planning commission to review and provide comments on throughout. So I guess it's gonna depend on what stage they're in, what they want.
It's gonna be fun to give them options like that.
Yeah.
Also to talk about maybe some of our goals and, you know, wanting a shorter plan that's usable and strategic and that our, you know, we appreciate all the work they're doing. And part of what we'll, we want, need to do is to, uh, be critical to a certain extent or, um, you know, pushback or if they do get this criticism or pushback from us, they shouldn't think of it as any kind of a tag, is that, you know, we should be working on this together and, um, that they can, it's coming from a place of love.
It's quite agreeable. I'm thinking of it in terms of when you are responsible for a bigger plan and somebody else is responsible for a tiny chapter, it's easy for each committee to put forward a lot of goals and we're gonna have to be, we're gonna have to help push people to, push these committees to identify the really key goals. And having in mind that we have all these chapters to do.
I think one role we're going to have is in defining the current, say, the things we talked about having it like that to be succinct in the, in the city plan at the end. I think it sounds like maybe at the outset, if we're going to get, maybe lengthy descriptions of these things and that are part of our, um, contribution will be the parallel, maybe.
And I, and I think some of these, like, like the document, like that document right there can be one that could end up just as a, as a white paper that just, um, eventually ends up on the web with just an extra piece of information that would be used to build the plan later. And I think there are a number of those, especially if you see the first part, the rationale for why these are our aspirations, you know, four or five pages of real detailed description of why this is our aspiration for the housing goals. Well, that's not really gonna be in the plan, but if we, it certainly had the time in the development, then we could put that in the white paper. If we, if we're building this on a web, we can just web link so many things. If somebody really wants to know, they can be able to dive down in as deep as they wanna go into some of these topics. Be able to dive down in as deep as they wanna go into some of these topics.
Yeah, I mean, could those aspirations be part of the uh, appendix, that kind of thing that's directly linked to the plan? Because that helps to explain why. That kind of thing. I just don't want the pieces to get too separated from each other.
Yeah, I mean, certainly if we, they can all be brought together into a single. Yeah, a single linkable document or, you know, if you want to make that into a large, you know, fifty page white paper on the energy plan that gets stuck in that. Cause it's all put together and assembled nicely. I just don't have a lot of the time to do all the pieces to put together all the white papers, but. Chip.
Does each committee have its own webpage?
They don't, but we just created a website and I think we just need to, well, we did two years ago.
Oh.
Got the new website that we can now, previous web, we couldn't edit, so this new one we can. So I think it's just a matter of us coming up and saying. Here's how we'd like it structured and then with this new Google Docs, I don't know if that would be something that would be different related, but. We'll figure out the pieces, but certainly on the web, we should have all of the pieces for people to be able to look up.
Yeah, the energy community does already have a website.
Pretty active.
And uh, Google Docs that we're constantly throwing things into. So I'm not sure how, I believe it's probably beautiful, everything that we have on there is quite beautifully.
So.
Seems like the committee would have to bring us a draft. And just we discuss it here. And then invite the committee people to come in and talk about it.
I think ultimately, yes, but maybe they want some involvement before then.
Well, I think with the. People just got on the same page and showed the interest in what they're doing and why. Let them do their work for a while and see what's gonna happen. I think that works for each committee. They probably. Don't understand the process of developing a plan very well, just a whole public give and take and. Running it through the city council. And why. Remedy is important. I think it needs to be a give and take. If you're gonna be responsible for writing. I don't wanna have to sit there and read a lot of documents on a webpage by myself with no feedback from other people. Frank, I'm not gonna do it.
So you talked about discussing.
I would read it and if I was gonna come to a meeting where somebody would. What do you think about this? At least like to say I've read it.
Well, I think if we, I think if we had the goals, policies, recommendations, it'd be either a consultant or staff that would put together those six page, five page. So what's our housing element? Well, now that we've all had the discussion of the goals, policies and recommendations, the committees had their discussion and they've had the public inputs. We'll pull something together and start to say, okay, you know. Here you go, Kim, what do you, what do you think, what do you guys all think about this for our housing chapter? Does this tell the story we're trying to tell? You know, is this inspirational for? You know, is getting a majority of the public on board with why affordable housing is important or?
Mike, since we've been, and the energy committee have been working on this for a while, would it make sense to bring the sin as a doc, you know, just our goals? Um, at some upper level to bring them in to the commission to talk about?
I don't know, I guess that's up to the, to the. Planning commission if you want to start. Cause we were gonna start with the, the housing, I mean, the energy committee is probably a close second for the amount of work that's been done on goals and policies.
I just wanna make sure that that's the right direction or that the commission is in agreement with the direction. So it would not necessarily mean that it would be an in-depth dive, it would just be very.
Let's first figure out, do you have what you need to meet with the housing task force? We will come back to energy committee. But we, we talked about a lot of things, a lot of concepts and I wanna make sure that we have a clear list.
Yeah, I think, yeah, what I think we'd be working, but I, cause they're gonna be coming to talk to you guys and. I'm really meeting with them to kind of invite them in, but I think what we're going to be. The direction of, I'm gonna be telling them, if I understand you guys, is we're really gonna be focusing not on that six or seven pages to start. We're really gonna be starting on the structured discussion of these goals, policies and recommendations and starting to make sure we, you know, we already have them. Penciled out, we just have to continue the conversation on those. And to start to build on that and then to make this something that we can get into a Google Docs or some kind of way of being able to track them. So we can start. To get a process so we can all go and say, I like this process, I think this is gonna work. And then once we've got a process that works, we can then. Start to bring this out to the other committees, but the housing committee gets to be our G and X.
Are you thinking, I guess I'm not clear whether we would wanna send this. Chapter to other committees before we send it to the public for engagement? What do folks think about that? Should we reach out, should, should we ask the housing task force to reach out for public feedback on the goals? Before we circulate this? Or should we circulate it, have everybody be working on the goals and then they can all be reaching out to the public?
Like have every committees and every other committee there?
Well, it sounds like we, well, we would send one, we'd send one chapter to all of the committees as an example. Yes.
And I, I just think. I was just gonna say, I, I don't think this is very readable, like as a, as a public comment. They documented it to the public, so I didn't know if you'd wanna ask them to do something different than that, but.
It seems like we, if we identified just the goals, which is, you know, sort of the higher level parts.
Right, they've done a lot of the content, yeah.
I don't know that we, we, you know, we want to start there, but if all of the committees could come up with goals, would that be a useful um?
My concern is just trying to not get in too deep in having. Transportation, housing, public community services, utilities, I mean, you have all these different ones. If we started to go throw this out and start to go work on this, there's, we don't nearly have the staff in it. To start to work with that many committees, which is even if we, once we get done with housing, my next recommendation would be to say, okay, once we've got one. Let's pick three chapters that we'll work on next. And work with three committees over the next year to do energy, historic preservation and transportation. These are three that have been getting a lot of work. We've got a complete street plan. Done a lot of work with energy and we've got historic work. Three more chapters and after that we can go back.
I think historic's pretty busy right now.
Yeah, well, they, we'd have to finish what we're, we'd have to finish housing, I mean, I think this is going to take time just to do this housing chapter. I wouldn't think we're done with housing by the end of the summer. I don't think this is gonna be fast, I think when, when you have committees that meet once a month. It's gonna be.
Can we send chapters to the city council for comment?
Uh, we haven't yet, I mean.
No, but as a process.
We could.
Instead of giving them this huge document. This is only developed for housing, energy, transport, whatever. And just put it on the city council's agenda for discussion and comment. Cause that would get a lot of public uh. Discussion and input.
Yeah, so it's one to look at and we'll see where, where the council goes. We, we had this that, you know. Remember with the, with the zoning, don't send us the zoning all at once at the end, send it to us in pieces. So we sent it to them in pieces, they said, we can't possibly go and review this, we don't have the entire thing. And so we're just like, okay, so um, I think it'll be a little bit of that. Because so many pieces interact, um, I think we can give them the housing and talk about the housing, I think.
Mike, you must have done a prior council about how the plan would be developed. And I think we got a lot of new people. We better start that process again.
It would be good to get their input in terms of what their priorities are. Bigger picture where they'd like to go and maybe set some expectations on the process once they do get them. I'm not interested in another situation where like with the zoning, they go ahead and have their entire separate. Hearings and then write their own zoning. Their intention is to act like a second planning commission as well as city council.
Actually, I'd rather not ask them for their opinions until they've seen the homework. Cause their opinions are not gonna be very.
Important?
They won't be very deeply thought out, whatever the commission. So I think our idea is to give them. Some thinking and say, look, this is, we'd like your comments.
And I think we talked a little bit about this at the previous meetings and um, one thing we had been waiting for as staff. Was for the new council to be seated, and new mayor to be seated, just so we can see what their, what their goals, I mean, they still have to commit. Get introduced and get settled in, um, but. Do they want, do they have as a, as a, as a goal of the council to, you know, we need a new. City plan and we need to get working on this. And if that's, if that's direction from them, then that helps us to know that, well, this is something we should put in priority. The council meets and says, look, we're about burned out on this planning stuff, you know, um. We want you focusing on a very specific. You know, we want the planning department working on complete streets and making more. Um, bike lanes and sidewalks. Well, that kind of takes my staff away from working on this and we kind of have to adjust. We've kind of been meeting here the past couple of weeks, cause we don't have a council direction, but I think they're gonna wanna have us work on that. So punch me in the shoulder every time I say it.
Alright, we could put corners in the middle right now.
Um, so I'm pretty sure, especially with the housing plan, everything I know about this council says, they're interested in housing, so. Ultimately, we're gonna need to have a housing plan that helps. Answer the questions that Ashley and Anne and Rosie and Donna, I mean, I don't know the new counselors. But I know those, those four um, counselors and now mayor. That's been an important thing for them, some of them reenance that, that as their platform, so.
In terms of process, getting back to that, uh, what we wanna ask the committees for. Um, you think it will, it would involve, necessarily involve your staff, if we just ask each of the committees to come up with their. Top six goals without any of the support information to that. Because I mean, I know from, from writing the energy plan, it's really helpful for me to know what transportation's in. Because then that influences one of our goals.
I, I think we do need to be with, as staff, to be involved because we're not just kind of throwing things out for people to give us. You know, as, as we were just talking about, you know, we wanna force them into these boxes of, you know, retain, enhance, transform. We want them to start talking about things in a certain way. Um, because that, that lays the foundation for us to then develop an implementation strategy to implement it if it's not.
Sure.
That, and I haven't met with them to kind of talk about, this is what we're trying to, this is how we're trying to frame our goals. This is how we're trying to frame our.
Well, I mean, if you're only operating on the goal level, you know, sort of the high level and they. Send out some basic parameters to those committees that they haven't spoken about, because this is how we, we see goals. Um, and they, you know, will all get it wrong anyway for a while, but it's, it's just been really helpful, I think, just to have an idea. What are the six major goals the transportation has?
I think that would be very helpful.
They're not the ones I.
At least getting the ones through all the committees before coming back and maybe two years before we come back, but we.
Right, right, we'll come back to you later, but at least we know, or then the two committees that are involved in, in overlap could have something to talk about.
Yeah, I think those are fine, they're good.
Right, right, we could, you know.
But at least we know generally.
What they're thinking about, yeah.
Maybe encourage them to be less than six or, cause that would have us be have around like eighty-five goals for each chapter.
Which one?
If, if each chapter has six goals, we'll have.
Oh, we're getting down to six is tough. Six, no, six is.
We should have three for the entire plan.
Sorry, John, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think John's point is that if we wanna achieve the goals, we have to be really. Critical with the ones that we include.
Someone asked you in the street, what are you guys doing? What are your goals? You have eighty goals to explain.
We're going down today where we think, what do we have, five hundred?
Yeah, right, that's, it's definitely improvement, isn't it? We're not responsible for all eighty of those goals, you know, it's, it's just that they are, are forming this framework that. That the other committees are working from, so each committee is now responsible for the entire plan.
I thought this, I thought this, this template and, and sort of intro discussion that, that we're hoping to put together. I, I was in the assumption that we were going to send it to every committee now, even though there might be some that we don't speak with for a year.
I, is there enough background for them to understand that what we're sending? We might, you met with some of the committees already.
The template and the message about outreach and the message about support, the A, B and C that we have under the agenda right there.
I think.
Do we have a template to send out until? I mean, part of the reason we were doing the, the housing chapter was so we could develop the template. Did we want to wait till we got through the housing? To basically refine that template?
I mean, I, that's not that much of a delay, right? A month? Or no, you, oh, you're talking about the, getting the entire chapter done?
Yeah, I mean, I think it'll be probably, like I said, knowing that they meet once a month. And just this stuff routinely just takes longer than. Ah, it shouldn't take more than three months to get done with this and every three month project takes six months, so.
What if we just gave them a, like an outline?
Just develop one, one aspiration, one goal, one set of implementation strategies for that, knowing that you may have three or four.
Or six.
No, 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 I'm only interested in the six goals. I don't want every step of one of those six, six goals.
Well, no, but the template needs to have.
No, eventually, yeah.
Right, but that's the point, I think, we're trying to, we're trying to nail down how we're gonna do this and it sounds like a template that has the goal, the implementation. The steps, just one goal and the. Nailing that down and then saying, as you develop your goals, we think it's important to start creating public outreach, but we will. We'll come back, we'll come to you already.
Talking about our outreach expectations, who's in our expectations now is, is a big part of what we were.
But also then if you're gonna tell them that they have to, that there's an outreach component here, that they're, they're gonna have to get staff support.
Well, and that's why we would probably.
So we will wanna give a lot of.
So I'm, we're saying down the road, this is what we're expecting.
Yes.
But right now, what would be helpful maybe to all of the committees at once would be a sense of what your committee. Thinks are your most important goal, even if they're not the right format, I mean, we, we'll probably get goals all over the place. Although if you came up, you know, with one example, with the aspiration goals and strategies, that might help. Um, to get it, get it right worked.
Another option could be to, to, to ask for some pilot info like that and to send the templates for incoming.
Yeah, yeah, definitely let them know that there's a format that we're going to offer them.
Maybe you like, put together some form letter that we could send to the various committees.
The, the, this could, the B and C for our gender messaging side of it.
With an H. Mike's busy writing, so he'll come up with the H. This is what we'd like it to send us. This is what we'd like you to send us.
Under A would be what our, our expectations from the committees. Perhaps what they, you know, could provide to all of the committees. If they could provide, you know, an overall goals, that would really be helpful. Cause otherwise, we've been operating dark. So some of our goals may no longer be appropriate.
Okay, so I think Kirby and I will put together a a letter to send to the various committees and an outline for walking through our expectations of A, B, and C with the housing task force for the next meeting. We plan this discussion. And then we'll try to have that outline together before Mike sends out the agenda. So folks can comment on it at the beginning of the meeting. I don't think I'll be able, I don't think it's really safe for me to send it out before they, for comments before the agenda, but I'll send it, try to give it on the agenda. All right. Item six, talk about the minutes from February twenty-sixth.
I'm moving the thing.
Second.
One. Correction? Cause I wasn't even here by Skype. You weren't here.
She's, um, she was enlisted as present when she wasn't present.
Yeah.
Present, in person, via Skype, via phone.
I was, I was in bed, no, yeah. Mike requested that I not come and share with the commission.
Appreciate it.
He missed you that much.
Oh, no, just thought I was private wallpaper.
Yeah.
Any other updates in the minutes? Okay, all those in favor with goals, same time, same line. All those opposed. Anonymously, um.
I mean, there's something else I was gonna just mention and I can't remember what it is now, I'm sure I will pick myself out of it.
We have to do with the chapter?
No, something separate from, uh, from the city plan discussion.
Do you need approval of a grant request?
No, no, no approvals for grant requests. It was more of an announcement, I can't remember what it was, so.
Personnel changes.
We both have personnel changes.
Isn't it in India?
No, not here in the. Uh, zoning administrator. Yep, she's gonna be going to stuff. She lives in Waterbury, she has a great job, yeah, it's a great job for her, so.
What's she gonna be doing there?
Disappointed, uh, she will be the zoning director.
Even if you live in, uh, work in Waterbury, you live in Waterbury.
Yes.
Well, I hope it's a promotion.
We used to, we used to sadly watch where all the staff from the Rachel Planning Commission lived and it was always funny to go and watch the fact that, like.
When is she leaving?
Oh, yeah.
When is she leaving?
Uh, in April, so we've got a couple more weeks.
Record my thanks for the terrific work she's done and hope that this is a promotion well deserved.
She's, she will be, she will be, she's, uh, extremely talented.
So knowledgeable about it.
Yep.
And she's running historic preservation.
That's, that's making me nervous. How that energy is gonna be.
Somebody will have to, one of us will have to be taking.
And that reminds me, that, that meeting is tomorrow, right?
That meeting is tomorrow.
But there is also a meeting that I, I shared with you.
There's a party for departing politicians.
It's tomorrow, right?
Tomorrow, yeah.
For the mayor, for the outgoing mayor, um, and the, and the city councillor, so. I'm supposed to go if they're available. That is tomorrow, I sent an email. I don't remember the.
And now it's gonna rate it in the phone.
Five o'clock.
Was that it? Or no, there's another thing that you're thinking of?
No.
Okay.
Well, then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, you have a second?
A second.
It's non-debatable for you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.